Pamela Ellison, followed by Richard Lehman.
Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Pamela Ellison. I have lived in Tacoma, D.C. for 28 years. And I object to the characterization of the folks with whom I agree about this development, that it is too big and there are other issues with it, that we are here in our self-interest. I don't live anywhere near the metro station, even though I'm in Tacoma, D.C., and there are many other people who have spoken today against the development who do not also, they do not live near the metro station. We are not, none of us is here for our self-interest, number one. And my colleagues have been so eloquent that I will just say a couple of other things. First of all, the buffer park needs to stay, and everybody has said that. But I would also like to add that if EYA were a little bit more creative about the building design, they could keep the buffer park, which is adjacent to the building, to the parking lot, and configure it so that the residents of the new building, which I am not against, for their use as well, okay? But it needs to stay. Second, I think it's an insult that EYA comes in with proposal that is against D.C.'s zoning regulations. That's an insult to those of us who live in D.C. And the third thing is that I am one of these old folks, and I am not handicapped yet, but I need my parking space so that I can go downtown and enjoy the downtown part of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Lehman, to be followed by Chris Turner. I believe the gentleman is just dropping off his testimony.
I'm Richard Lehman. I'm going to talk fast because I have three minutes. Submitted other testimony in '06 and in 2013, should be part of the record. Just going to address the points raised in flyers and other materials by the Tacoma Right-size people. One about the size. This site should be judged on characteristics appropriate to the site. It's at the center of the community. It has typographical issues that allow for a taller building, besides the fact of which it won't be the tallest building in the neighborhood. There are already two much taller buildings. The third point about traffic backups on Eastern Avenue, the biggest solution to Eastern Avenue is to take off the D.C. residential parking on the east-west side of the street. All those apartment buildings have on-site parking. But when you have the ride-on buses and cars, it's not wide enough for through traffic because of the parking. That would solve tremendous parking, or throughput issues on that street about pedestrian access to metro. Most of the people come on Cedar Street from either east or west. Eastern Avenue, walking to the metro, they go through the parking lot, which is not best practice by any means. This project will result in significant improvements in that area. Regarding parking for metro riders, yes. Speaking of constraints, which we're not talking about, are trade-offs. A bigger building allows underground parking. It's too expensive otherwise. You can have your parking. I bike. I'm 54. I hope to still be biking in 20 years or more. But these are trade-offs. If you shrink the project, you can't do other things like keep green buffers or have underground But improvements, significant improvements to the other existing open space will be wonderful because, yes, the space does suck, as one other person said before. Regarding zoning allowances in the master plan, there's no question that Tacoma Central Plan is out of date significantly. It was designed during the 1990s when D.C.'s conditions were so significantly different. And even, if you talked to anyone in the office planning, they would, they would agree that the plan's precepts aren't really, that they're out of date. Finally, about visual blight and out of scale with the community, I can't think of a bigger visual blight than that parking lot. That's the worst visual blight in the neighborhood, and this would be way better. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Turner, to be followed by Dr. Julie Bodie. Can you go ahead and start your testimony? Thank you. We'll do that. Thanks.
Good evening, Mayor Porter. My name is Chris Turner. I live here on the Tacoma, D.C. side. I grew up in Tacoma, D.C. I attended this school. I attended Gonzaga for high school. I did the youth orchestra program at Coolidge. I went to AU for undergrad, and I went to Howard for law school. Earlier today, I spoke with Mr. Wall, and I think we both agreed, there is a federal final environmental impact statement on the metro website. So this is a big document that anybody can look at. When Cheryl Court of the Coalition for Smarter Growth and Jack Lester of EYA talk about the underutilized parking lot, or that it's half-empty, that's by design. The federal environmental impact statement said there would be no commuter parking here. So what I think is important is for everyone at Womata to remember, that land, federal money was used for the metro system. The Federal Transit Administration, the federal government, they own, they have an interest in this land. So I think, Mr. Wall, you agree that a joint development project has to follow the Federal Transit Administration Joint Development Project guidelines. Those guidelines have very specific requirements that I'm not sure EYA has even looked at or if they're following. Now, the letter that they sent, it's dated May 27th, the EYA letter to the neighborhood, but it only came a few days ago. It said, "EYA is working with Womata to build a new residential apartment community at the existing Tacoma metro station parking lot." Well, I'm for that, but they're not going to build just in the parking lot, they're going to build in the buffer park. And the buffer park is part of the design. That metro station didn't just appear one day, it was designed by Womata, by the D.C. City Council. That buffer park is there because in part, it's not just a metro station, it's a bus station, too. There are diesel buses there, or hybrid diesel buses. So please be aware, there's a reason why that station was designed that way. There's a reason that parking lot is partially empty at certain times of the day. And then, as someone else pointed out, if you go to the Coalition for Smarter Growth website, they have an EYA logo on their website. They're getting money from EYA. They're not even a 501(c)(3). They're getting, they're using the Piedmont Environmental Council as their parent in Warrenton, Virginia. So I question EYA, and I question the Coalition for Smarter Growth. They also, by the way, wrote, "Build in the parking lot," or that EYA said, "Build in the parking lot." I'm for building in the parking lot. That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Julie Bodie, to be followed by Richard Van Meter. Dr. Julie Bodie. All right. Richard Van Meter, to be followed by Catherine Tunis. Richard Van Meter. All right. Catherine Tunis, to be followed by Gregory Bordnawski.
Hello, how are you? Catherine Tunis, I'm president of the Southeast Sligo Citizens Association, a position that council member, board member, Porter held 20-something years ago.
A few years, yes.
And we discussed this development at our meeting in last October. The Saskia area is located about one to three miles away from the metro station, and so that neighborhood has some particular interests that they wanted to present to the board. Number one is preserve the green space. It is not an empty space. It is extremely important for commuters and to maintain proper mental health and good mood and all sorts of stuff, and also provide some shade while we're waiting for the buses. All development should be transit-oriented, planned for growth, and have adequate facilities for pedestrians, bus riders, and biking. We certainly agree with the concerns expressed by the community members that this building is too big, that it has a very strong visual impact on the community, there's a serious traffic impact, and will increase the demand for parking in the area. This is not, as just currently designed, this is not a building that will fit into that neighborhood. This is in a Godzilla that will loom over the neighborhood, threatening to eat it at any time. The Saskia neighbors have a particular concern about adequate public parking. The prior gentleman made the point that the parking lot was not half-full, or so that does not mean that there's no demand for parking. It was designed that way. And so for the Womata analysis to say that there is currently no further need for parking, that was incompetent and inappropriate to say anything like that. Saskia recommends that the development have no fewer than the current number of parking spaces, excluding those set aside for taxis, Zip Cars, or any other purposes. There should be adequate provision for parking for those with special needs. People should be able to use their smart trip card to get out of the parking lot. We understand the community concern that we do not want this to become a large commuter garage. There could be limits on time that have been suggested, such as seven-hour limits, that should start when somebody starts parking. And we encourage a special pass for people who live one to three miles away and need special accommodations. We should ensure that Womata receives adequate revenues for this development. Womata is ours. Metro is ours. I spend more time on the metro than I spend in my living room. This is why people feel so strongly about this, is that this is ours, our community is ours. We not only want to preserve our community, but we want to preserve metro to make sure that it's there for people in the future. And we strongly encourage future discussions with the community. They have been very few and far between to date. Thank you.
Thank you. Gregory Bordnawski, to be followed by Charles Gorham.
Hi. My name is Greg Bordnawski. I've been an architect for 26 years. I've lived in Tacoma Park for 14 years, and I've done a lot of work in and around historic districts. I usually find myself on the other side of the fence advocating for development, and sometimes you find yourself in a position that you didn't expect. I'm going to limit my comments to just some things that I saw in the plans that I think could improve the project. I imagine that this development is going to go forward, they usually do. But a couple of things struck me. The first thing is Eastern Avenue is a residential area. Its buildings are two or three stories at most, so the precedent for a taller building, I find, unconvincing. The setback to the fourth story, I think, is not really working. I think what you really need is something that's a series of three-story buildings across there. Also, the loading dock. I'm not really sure why you would put a loading dock on a valuable piece of street frontage in a basically residential street when you have an alley that you're building as part of your project. There's no reason that I can see, and there's a step in the grade that would allow you to hide it from the adjacent apartments, so I don't know quite why you did that. Recent developments in the area were no more than five stories. I think if you stepped up at the tracks, that might be acceptable, but the bulk facing the neighborhood should definitely be lower. Finally, I think the park, or the green space in front of the building on the Eastern Avenue side, doesn't really acknowledge the neighborhood. Again, I'm thinking in terms of how to make something that's good development, and as Jane Jacobs said, places where people want to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Gorham, to be followed by Bev Shenyo.
Hi. My name is Charlie Gorham. I live in the Cedar Crossing condominiums at 343 Cedar Street Northwest. It's right across the metro from the current proposed development. And I support the proposed development for three reasons. One, it provides the best benefit to the neighborhood. The neighborhood is growing, and to support the recent development in the community, we need more people. We're fortunate to live in an urban neighborhood that has great metro and bus access. Since the parking lot only offers hourly parking, people rarely park there. We owe it to the greater D.C. area to use the property to its greatest value, and that is to offer a reasonable housing option, so that more people can have access to what we have access to. The specification, two, the specifications of the proposed development are more than reasonable. Since I've moved into the neighborhood, I've noticed that there's a vocal minority of people consistently oppose all development in the neighborhood. Sometimes they're direct about their opposition, and sometimes they're more indirect, which is the case here. Rather than offer more viable alternatives or work with people like EYA towards reasonable alterations to current plans, we see things like signs in yards with meaningless buzzphrases, and we see people policed on community listservs. Not every aspect of the development is going to win everyone's heart, but the current plans are more than reasonable. And if you ask me, I think it's too small. The proposed building is in line with the rest of the neighborhood. It provides for a necessary parking for some, but not all residents, which is more than appropriate for the neighborhood, and it maintains an adequate amount of green space. Third, the vocal minority that I spoke of claims that this development will harm the people who live the closest to it. I live right there. I live across the metro from the proposed development, and I think it will only enhance my life. The current parking lot is depressing, and it's useless. I welcome the idea of more people, more neighbors, and more activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Bev Shenyo, followed by David Frye. Okay. David Frye, followed by Elizabeth Merritt.
Thank you very much. I'm David Frye. I'm a 26-year D.C., Tacoma, D.C. resident, homeowner, taxpayer, husband, father of kids educated in D.C. public and charter schools. Build it. It can't happen soon enough for me. Somebody said, talked about irresponsibility before. To me, it's irresponsible that the site has remained vacant and in public ownership for 40 years. Don't lock yourself in on the green space. The one acre that was proposed in the Tacoma Central Plan is more than enough. You are the Washington Metropolitan Area Transit Agency, not the Washington Metropolitan Area Parks Agency. It is not part of your mission to provide parks and recreation to this area, or any area. Effective use of the resources that you hold for the benefit of the entire system is your mission. If you turn this entire site into a park, the next time somebody complains to you about delayed maintenance, higher fares, the poor condition of cars, your response should be that, "Well, we had some surplus land, but that we could sell. But instead, we set it aside for a park in an upper-middle-class area where you can hardly find a detached, single-family house for under $500,000." Go and tell that in southeast. You know, "No, we couldn't use this land for the benefit of the, to sell it for the benefit of the entire system, to get land back on the tax rolls, to get taxpayers back in the city. We had to provide a park for these people." Tacoma Park, Maryland has its own park system. There are 600-foot-deep yards over there. They have enough green space. We don't need, you don't need to be providing these people with green space. One acre is more than enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Merritt, to be followed by Nancy Courier. Elizabeth Merritt. Okay. Nancy Courier, to be followed by David Reiser. I think, I think it's on.
Green light means it's on.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Nancy Courier. Hello to everybody. I live at 7307 Holly Avenue in Tacoma Park, Maryland. I have for 40 years, and I've worked downtown for a long time using the subway. I do very much like the subway. I and my fellow Maryland and D.C. neighbors frequently traverse the narrow intersection of Holly and Eastern avenues by foot and by car.
Can you, can you hold the microphone close?
Okay.
Thank you.
By adding 200 or more cars to the immediate community, the EYA plan will congest that intersection and promote accidents in that intersection. It will pollute the air with auto exhaust. The 20-plus trees on the buffer green space won't be able to help us, for EYA plans to completely eliminate that piece of land. I feel that the EYA proposal discounts my interests. It discounts those similar to mine of my Maryland and D.C. neighbors. I hope that you will not accept it unless the number of apartment units, and therefore cars, are substantially lowered, and without retaining the green space buffer. I'm in favor of that green space buffer. Thank you.
Thank you. David Reiser, followed by Bradley Green.
I'll be very quick, because you guys look like you're just enduring this, and I think it's really important that you listen, as opposed to just endure. I'm sorry. I think it's important that you listen, not just endure. I understand its heart. This isn't about Maryland versus D.C. I've been a member of the Tacoma community for 22 years, most of them in the District of Columbia. I now live in Maryland, but I was part of the planning that went into the central district plan, and I would have the same view if I was still living right up the street on Seventh Street, as I do now. The plan you have is not smart growth because you do not have a walkable community. What you have is a plan that is designed to maximize revenue from a particular parcel, not a sensible, integrated development. I would love it if you would put together a plan to do economic development, to put a grocery store, and enough things in the immediate neighborhood that people actually could, as EYA's slogan has it, "Life within walking distance." But that's not true. And all I ask is that you stand, each one of you, spend a week standing on Carroll Avenue at 5:00 in the afternoon, or on Eastern Avenue, when two buses are crossing against each other, and then decide whether this is a good plan, given the limits of the existing non-metro infrastructure. I want metro to succeed. I want development in Tacoma to succeed. But this is a plan that is constrained by the size of your parcel and not by what makes smart growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Bradley Green, to be followed. Sorry about that. Bradley Green, followed by Jack Sullivan.
Thank you. My name is Bradley Green, and I live three blocks from the proposed development. I support EYA's proposed development for the Tacoma metro station. I believe the development will benefit the entire neighborhood and is of an appropriate scale, given its proximity to high-capacity transit. People who live in this development will do so largely because of the easy access it provides to metro. As a result, many occupants will not own a car. Those that do will drive less than people living further from the station. Thus, the impact on area traffic will not be nearly as great as the size of the development would otherwise suggest. More importantly, however, this development will energize a sleepy commercial district adjacent to the station. These businesses need more residents within an easy walking distance to thrive. A thriving business community in turn will enable these same residents to walk to goods and services they would otherwise have to drive to, thus further reducing the number of cars on area streets. The larger Tacoma community, of course, also benefits from a successful commercial core, while at the same time retaining its residential character. In other words, this is a development that will improve both access to metro and life in the neighborhood. For these reasons, I support the EYA development. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Sullivan, followed by Barbara Whitney. I apologize, that's not the best setup for the microphone.
Hi. My name is Jack Sullivan. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park, and I'm a landscape architect. Most of my issues are not about the development itself. I think the idea is great. I hope that something really beautiful happens out of this development, but right now, that's not what's happening, and therefore I don't support this particular scheme as it's presented. First of all, I think there was a little bit of a bait-and-switch that happened. If you go online and you start to look at some of the illustrations for the proposed project, it actually looks very handsome, with recessed windows and a sense of masonry, good materials, and a nice, solid feel, as if it has been and will last a very long time. What we see here, I think, is not that. I think it's a very irresponsible, banal design with bad materials, and I think it's got to be reconsidered. But more importantly, I think the idea of saving the park is a very good thing that's happening. That wouldn't have happened without getting some height, and I don't mind that the building is kind of on the high side. What I do mind, though, is that there isn't a buffer to the apartments on Eastern Avenue. I think that's a very big concern. I think that the, not only the size of the trees, but also the distance from the driveway and the house of those apartments should be recognized, and that those people who live there should have as much of the amenity of the green space as possible. I think that what, one of the biggest problems I see is that they have not gone underground, and by not going underground, they've gone higher up. So they're trying to avoid the cost of putting something below grade, and in the process, they're creating a very uncomfortable, very unattractive building that we'll see at eye level, that we'll see from the metro, which is elevated looking across at this building. So I really hope that this will be redesigned, perhaps lowering the number of units, but I don't know. My calculations, I think you can still have a responsible development at about 165 to 175 units. I think they're planning somewhere around 215 at this point. I'm not sure about the count. But I think there's something that needs to be addressed in terms of the character of this place, because that's what Tacoma Park is all about, whether it's D.C. or Maryland. And I think you have to have a really good building, and this is not a really good building.
Okay. Thank you. Barbara Whitney, followed by Peter Fiden.
Hi. My name is Barbara Whitney, and I'm not going to repeat things. I just want to say that I think what we need to think about mostly and focus on is ease of accessibility and safety. And those are the things that, when I look at the pictures and I look at the plans, I don't see details for those things. It's like, yes, we will upgrade the sidewalks, yes, there will be this, but I haven't seen real, real plans for the safety, especially the safety, and then ease of accessibility. One person mentioned opening up on the west side, it was the bicycle commentary. Is there a possibility of doing that, to really connect the D.C. side on the other side of the tracks to the D.C. side on the Maryland side of the tracks? I don't know, but couldn't that tunnel be continued? That's one, just one item. And then, without a buffer and without a setback, how safe is it really for all the people that are going on all those sidewalks? And I think that that should be the first concern, really. And then after that, you see how big a building you can build and exactly where you can build it. And that's what I'm hoping is going to happen here after all of our input. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter Fiden, followed by Brian Robinson.
Hi. I'm Peter Fiden. I live on Eastern Avenue, across from the project. I've lived there for 25 years. I've always loved the neighborhood. The one negative from the day I moved in was the fact that we were across from a parking lot, and I'd always hoped that there would be some development there. So I was guardedly optimistic when, about 14 years ago, Womata's chosen developer, EYA, presented a plan. Unfortunately, it was a plan that the community could not support for two quite different reasons. One was reasons. One was that it was going to use the bulk of the both green spaces, and the second was that it was not smart growth in any stretch, because it was townhouses with two-car garages. So after some very limited engagement and a lot of conflict, the Tacoma Central District Plan was devised to create a master plan for the community, not just for that site, but for the whole area, including Blair Road, all the way up to the District-Maryland border. It includes all the way up to the 7-Eleven, the site that's currently being developed next to the 7-Eleven. And the plan was a relatively good compromise, I thought, and I think many others thought, in that it limited development to four stories, called for up to ninety-five units, called for a fifty-foot buffer park between any development and the existing apartment buildings. And then, after a couple more years of very slow movement, the plan totally died because of the recession, and then we've come back suddenly, five years later, and the developer who fought vehemently against any redesign to incorporate smart-growth principles, suddenly was using smart-growth rhetoric to justify what you might call vertical sprawl, and has packaged redevelopment and has misconstrued opposition to earlier development as opposition to development per se. I would say that everybody that I've been associated with, who have been opposed to this project, are for development on the parking lot, and probably always have been. The problem is that this has taken fourteen years, and nothing has happened. That's not a reason to develop it now. It is a reason to get serious about development, and the seriousness has to start with some reasonable constructive engagement, where we get beyond the rhetoric of smart-growth and we get beyond construing opposition as opposition to development comprehensively, to a true dialogue that incorporates issues of density, height, mass, and borders. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Robinson, followed by Ian Barclay.
Hi, Brian Robinson. I represent Friends of Old Tacoma, Bi-jurisdictional Community Development Organization. We also run the Electric Maids Communities Arts Center, which directly faces the proposed development site, and we are one of the businesses that EYA offered to tear down ten years ago as a benefit to the community in return for taking away green space. Fortunately, none of the businesses on our side of the street were interested in their proposal, so they were actually going in the opposite direction from what we and other organizations were trying to convince them was needed. So this is the plan which we presented then, over ten years ago. It's also a plan that even the folks who are against development would not let us present. We were not given a chance to present it to the ANC. We were not given a chance to present it to anyone. The local elected officials refused to meet with us. So basically, our plan was all about smart-growth and also about dealing with the issue of the green space. Now, as you can see in this plan, there are three parts to the green space. There's the so-called village green, which nobody wants to get rid of. It's a very usable, roughly triangular or square area that is surrounded by businesses and the active part of the metro. It's very usable. You see people picnicking on it, surrounded by mature trees. Then you have the so-called amphitheater, as I call it, which sucks. It's surrounded by the bus turnaround. Nobody wants to go there because you have fume-sucking buses using this sideweltless turnaround here. They want to preserve the bus lanes exactly as it is, because they misinterpreted the previous sentiments as saying, "We want to preserve the bus lanes exactly as they are," which is a hideous suburban-style bus turnaround, which makes half of the green space unusable. So that's all in the current plan. The current plan will not do anything to make the green space usable, because it would retain the bus configuration as it is. Also, it would eliminate the buffer, which is key, because it's the only thing that provides any kind of separation between the development and the existing homes and apartments. So basically, what we're saying is, there's also the issue of the underground stream, which the current building would be built right on top of. This parcel here was the spring around which the entire community was built in the eighteen-eighties. There was a spring here, so they put a railroad station here. It was called the Little Spring. Big Spring was in Maryland.
Thank you.
And it went under Maple Avenue and Cedar Avenue.
Thank you.
So basically, that's the issue we're issuing.
Brian, thank you very much. Ian Barclay, followed by Shannon Crockett.
And for Mr. Wall, since you're a newbie in this area, I want to point out to you that when the station was originally built, which a lot of people didn't want, we were content with it being in Silver Spring. We saw it as a crime elevator, and it has turned out to be that. And I get EYA. EYA wants to jump the shark. They're about making a lot of money, and I understand that, but this has to follow procedure, and it has to follow the environmental impact statement, which Chris Turner mentioned, and it has to conform to the community. Now, I, for one, am opposed to development, because that land was taken through either eminent domain or the threat thereof, and as such, it was taken for transportation. It was not taken to convert to private gain for EYA, and that land should be held in reserve, all of it, for future transportation needs. I remind everybody that London, England already has congestion charging, and it has been discussed in Washington, it's being discussed in New York, as I see no end to the growing population in this area. This is our nation's capital. I predict that in the future, we have to look seventy-five years at least. That's what Social Security does as an actuarial. I think it's only prudent to look at seventy-five years ahead in order to try to gauge what transportation needs. You're going to have the Walter Reed Development, and as far as I'm concerned, that green space, if you convert it to private use, which is what you will do when you sell it to EYA, you're going to acknowledge the fact that it's no longer available for transit. Who knows what's going to be needed in the future? We could have future need for bus. We could have future need for bicycling. Everybody seems to be into bicycling today. We could have some kind of car-share program, but once you build on it, as Will Rogers, one of my favorite people, God rest his soul, said, "They stop making land." John Muir said, "Any fool can cut a tree down." Once you destroy that green space and avoid it being saved for future transit needs, which I suggest to you, that you folks on WAMADA are either fiduciaries, and I'm not going to argue the legal technicalities of a fiduciary, but you're trustees and stewards of the future of our nation's capital. This isn't any old city in the United States. This is the gateway to our community for the whole nation, and when people get off that subway, they should see a little green space. And for your information, the land there was quid pro quo for land that was taken in Maryland to widen the track bed. So us people in Maryland do have some standing on this issue. Thank you very much, and I wish you best.
Thank you. Shannon Crockett, and then Delegate Hucker has just arrived and will fit you in.
Good evening. My name is Shannon Crockett, and I'm here on behalf of Carol Laverre-Haran. I'm representing North Washington Neighbors Incorporated. It's a nonprofit educational organization that really did a lot in the Brightwood-Manner Park, Shepherd Park in Tacoma DC neighborhoods to push for integrated communities. It was founded in nineteen fifty-eight. We, as a board of Neighbors, Inc., do support additional development on the side of the Tacoma Metro Parking Lot, but we have some five main concerns about the proposed development by EYA. A lot of those concerns have been expressed by others. I think the main thing is that, as a resident of this neighborhood in Tacoma DC for over thirty years, let me just back off and say, you know, I've used the subway. We understand that WAMADA needs to maximize development at the metro stations, and we do support that. However, this is a very historic community, both in Tacoma DC and in Tacoma Park, Maryland. And I guess what we are looking for is something that's more in keeping with the Tacoma Central Plan. That is not an old plan. Others have characterized it as being out of date. It's from two thousand and two, but we think it needs to be development that—where the developer obviously has to make a profit, but we're hoping that it won't be out of character. I mean, I think you've already heard that there are a lot of single-family homes, both on the DC side and the Tacoma Park, Maryland side, and then you have the affordable housing. So we're hoping that the height of the complex won't exceed fifty feet, that even with the step-back, we think the seventy-foot-plus height of the project is just a little bit— it's totally out of character in Historic Preservation District, both in DC and Maryland. But, you know, we think it could be a fairly large complex. Then, the other concern we have is about keeping the green spaces as buffers. I'm not an architect. I don't have the expertise, but other people have spoken tonight. They seem to have some interesting ideas about ways to improve the project, to make it more safe, and still keep—I was concerned when I heard about the loading dock, particularly about maybe being a hazard to pedestrians. That came up this evening. So I'm hopeful—I realize my time is counting down—I'm hopeful that the project can be reconfigured to save those green spaces. We'd like to have a tree preservation and mitigation plan, and we'd also like the traffic study just closing up to take into account all the existing development that's taking place in the area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Delegate Tom Hucker.
Thank you very much, Mayor Porter and members of the board. We're joined by a very enthusiastic train rider, my son Sam. Thank you very much for holding this hearing and for accommodating my family's schedule. I appreciate it, and I understand you've given—Senator Raskin gave me the balance of his time, so I'll try to fill in quickly. I know you have a joint letter from him and I and Delegates Mazir and Hickson as well, and so let me just hit a few of the highlights rather than repeating all that, but we're asking you to schedule action on approval of the report for the compact hearing only after a more thorough review of the concerns that you're hearing tonight, which we've been hearing for a long time, about the impact of the proposed development on adjacent residential neighborhoods, both in DC and in Maryland. Specifically, we'd like to see a neighborhood design working group created to ensure proper consideration. Ultimately, we think this will result in a better project. We know projects like this have a lot of unintended consequences. We think we're going to get a better project if they're all considered on the front end, rather than trying to mediate them on the back end. We certainly don't want our constituents and ourselves to be shut out of future decisions, and so specifically, we urge you not to take action that would send the proposal to the district's PUD process. And we say this—I mean, Mayor Porter, you especially know us all very well—we're supporters of smart-growth, we're supporters of transit-oriented development, we're not NIMBYs, but we want to get the details right on this project, and again, we think we have the time to do that. According to EYA's own timeline, this will be years in the making, so it makes sense to get the details right on the front end. Thoughtful concerns have been raised in specific areas you've heard tonight about the overall height of the project, about the extent of setback from roads, the loss of green space, the increased traffic into our Maryland neighborhoods, and to less access to the metro station. None of these have been adequately addressed, and again, we have the time to do that. One in particular we've heard about is reduction of public parking spaces. We've heard from constituents who are daily WAMADA riders, who usually walk to the metro, but they've pointed out on certain days when they're picking up their kids, they're picking up groceries, they like to drive, they know the parking lot now fills up very quickly. If there's a loss of parking spaces, they feel like they'll be driving to work now, not taking WAMADA, because they won't be able to run their errands and take care of their families the way they can now if we lose those parking spaces. And importantly, neighbors have expressed widespread concerns about why a project like this would exceed DC's zoning requirements and the parameters set out in the Tacoma Central District Plan. Why would we have a Central District Plan if it could be so easily dismissed when it's been agreed on by all the stakeholders? Leaving concerns like that just to the PUD process, we feel, will shut Marylanders out of key decisions that will affect our constituents greatly. So in summary, let me just join my colleagues in asking for a neighborhood design working group with appropriate representation from Maryland, DC, and managed by WAMADA and EYA. Please don't proceed to final action to advance the project to the PUD process until the working group finishes its work and takes these into consideration. You know the phrase about "good fences making good neighbors." There's no fence in this case, nor do we want one, so to continue to be good neighbors without the accountability that a fence provides, we really need a path to a policy that respects all the stakeholders, rather than shutting any of us out. So thank you very much again tonight.
Robert Miller, followed by Kathy Carroll.
I'm Bob Miller. I live across the street. My wife and I have been longtime members and supporters of historic Tacoma. In fact, she designed the current newsletter. She lives now in Boulder, Colorado, in a ranch house, after stints in Los Angeles and San Francisco. So yes, we are together. We're just almost bi-coastal, but not yet bipolar. We're working on that. I was a developer for many years. I did ninety-five Victorian rehabs, and I live in my last one. Right now, I like everything on one floor, but I do have ballisters on my staircase so I can pull myself up and grab them on my way down. Now, I live, in effect, two blocks from where this development takes place. EYA is an excellent developer. They have many different developments of similar size around the metropolitan area. So we are lucky, basically, at having the best developer of this type of project in the metro area. Now, I'm not—I don't want a smaller development. We should have density around major transport nodes, and what's interesting about, you know, what is the demographic housing role of Tacoma versus other parts of Washington? This is where young people move when they have decided to sleep with the same person time and time again, and I know about this because I control some rental properties in the area. So this is why people move here, because they want kind of a bit of the burbs in town, and, you know, they want to be away—from, you know, frantic interactions down on Dupont Circle. So this is an appropriate development for the metro. It's an appropriate developer. There'll be some changes made there. Everybody—I mean, a lot of people bark about that green area across the street from 7-Eleven. I've never seen anybody use that space. I'm not camping out there, but it's, you know, it's not a New England green where you graze sheep, sheep, and, you know, happy to give part of that up. If it was designated as a place where the people come together for Tacoma Park for celebratory activities, it would be good, but it doesn't seem to be serving any purpose at all. Okay, I encourage you to back this, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you very much, and I would ask that the people in the audience please respect the speakers. Kathy Carroll, followed by Clifford Schwartz. Kathy Carroll, followed by Clifford Schwartz. Kathy Carroll?
She was here.
Okay. Clifford Schwartz, followed by Diana Vitoudis.
Hi, my name is Clifford Schwartz. I live in Tacoma Park. I'm a homeowner. I've lived in Tacoma Park for about 10 years with my wife and my daughter. We've invested in a house that we own. It was important to us to move to a beautiful community with this type of character. I am for reduced density, but for a reason that I haven't heard too much focused on, and that is for safety with the roads in the surrounding area. I specifically live on Route 410, Ethan Allen Avenue, where the congestion is so high, and it's right by the, what's called the Tacoma Park Junction. And it's so high already that fire trucks, ambulances, police cars have to go around cars in opposing lanes, forcing the cars in those opposing lanes to literally drive on the sidewalk and for pedestrians to have to get out of the way. I know this because I live on Ethan Allen Avenue, and I see this. Every single day, because ambulances, fire trucks, police cars need to go especially to the hospital, and they're traveling west toward that god-awful Tacoma Junction with a dysfunctional light, with only one lane going in either direction, is a danger for the people in the ambulances that they can't get through. It's a danger for the pedestrians. And when cars have to drive on sidewalks to get out of the way of emergency vehicles, something has to be done about it. I'm told that because it's a state road, that there's a two-to-three-hour wait for them to address the lights and the issue. And my point and connection is that by increasing the density of this development, that's going to make the peripheral roads worse, and in particular, a road like 410 even more dangerous than it already is. And I hope that if this development does move forward, that you or EYA or whoever it is works a lot closer and better with the State Highway Commission or agency, whatever it's called, to remediate those kind of issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Diana Vitoudis, and followed by Paul Weckstein.
Good evening. I've been a commuter. I've been using the Tacoma Park Metro for 30 years. I hope to use it for another 30. I just want to say a few things. First of all, do no harm. Secondly, leave well enough alone. Thirdly, if it ain't bug, don't fix it. And fourthly, don't take paradise and put in a parking lot. We already have a parking lot at Tacoma Park Metro. I'm sorry that some people consider it a blight. I wish it were planted with cherry trees. All I know is that it's a beautiful sight as I come back from downtown Washington where I work every day. I did look at the plan that EYA has proposed, and one thing that I really like about it is the swimming pool. Wow, they're going to have a swimming pool. And I hope they really enjoy it. Maybe I'll get a glance of it from the platform. But no, I won't, because my view will be blocked. The building will be that high, and the green space by the 7-Eleven, well, might as well not be there, because I won't see that either. I know that many people think that the green space is unfunctional because they don't see people picnicking on it and children playing underneath. Well, I don't want children playing in bus fumes, and that's the reason they were there. The green space is there to filter the bus fumes. And once anything is built in that area, there's going to be a limit to transit development. That's the reason I moved to Tacoma Park, because it provides easy access to Washington, DC. Hopefully, it will provide easy access for the incredible number of people who are moving into this area. I see the development, I see the, in the past 10 years, the high-rise buildings and apartment buildings in Silver Spring and the high-rise, and the development in Tacoma Park. It's not about saving parks and recreation for those of us who do have single-family homes. It's about preserving a little bit of an oasis for all of you so that you can breathe a little bit as you get off the metro and walk through an open area. And one thing I did want to say is if EYA is really interested in building the community or everyone wants to encourage community, build a community pool there. That would be fantastic, right on the site of the parking lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Weckstein, followed by Thomas Fedewa.
I've been a resident in the area for 33 years, first in DC in a, for DC purposes, a high-rise apartment, which I enjoyed tremendously, and then Tacoma Park in Maryland.
Can you hold the microphone a little closer?
And have relied very heavily on the metro for all that time. I moved to Tacoma Park not to be away from the city, to be part of an urban village, a green urban village. And so I'm not against development by any means around metro. However, there are clearly a lot of issues that have been raised about this particular development and trying to make it fit well and meet all the requirements that it should be meeting, which have now been exacerbated with a large development like this by what one speaker described about the change in the building plans and architectural plans. But whatever your approach to those issues, to then go and say, we're going to stick this building in that part of the property that is most, to begin with is out of place architecturally with everything else, to put it in that part of the lot, which is closest to the residential areas, both the apartment buildings and houses, is really to stretch the limits with very little setback and destroying what is the most, the densest green space on the whole property. And that is the most critical to housing around it. So I think it needs to go back through the process that Representative Hucker has described, where these things get taken more seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Fedewa, followed by Jessica Landman.
Good evening. My name is Tom Fedewa, and I graduated from Catholic University in 1960. I've been around town for a while. I left and have returned, and we have chosen to retire here. We live at 800 on Elder Street, not far from the project. A lot of good points made tonight, and it's not necessary to repeat them. However, I would think the choices are, do we want a metro station that looks like Silver Spring and the community that surrounds it? Or do we want a metro station that looks like Columbia Heights and the buildings that surround it? Or do we want something that looks more like, I don't know the name of the station, but it's out there by Denny's in southeast? And the buildings that are not around it? There will be buildings. However, I remember working in Camden, New Jersey, and we took children out to feel grass and to look at trees. They had never seen them in their lives. That's not going to happen here, but that building sitting right over there, that just doesn't cut it for a beautiful piece of architecture in a city whose, I think our motto was the city of trees? And I'll just close by saying, I'm one of seven boys. My father insisted that we all know that well begun was half-done, badly begun, probably never done. Good luck to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Landman.
Good evening, and thank you for your patience. I'm not going to repeat many of the excellent arguments that you have heard tonight in favor of a fair process that yields excellent results by including neighbors on both sides of the line. I think, I'm hoping that you heard our Maryland representative loud and clear talking about a process that will yield fair and reasonable results. Instead, I want to talk about specifically two fallacies that I've heard repeated here this evening that I find troubling. First is that the park, nobody uses it, it's not usable, and it, quote, sucks, unquote. Well, let's talk for just a moment about why the park is as, let's say, has a lot of potential and hasn't had much of that potential realized. The reason is because WAMADA has actually actively discouraged anybody in the neighborhood from turning it into an active and functional park, because it has been land preserved as reserved for transit uses, which is, follows WAMADA's charter to do that. Let's not think of this as a park that's failed. Let's think of it as a park that has not been able to be properly developed as green space because that opportunity has not existed. And let's build into what happens at this site, an opportunity to turn that into the vibrant green space that we need. Indeed, it's been studied and found that this lower part of Montgomery County and this area of DC has a deficiency of green space, given the density of population. Secondly, comments that the parking lot is underutilized. Well, what do you expect? Those parking lot signs are labyrinthine. Parking restrictions so complicated that you need a PhD to figure out when you can park, all designed to prevent commuter parking. If the neighborhood could use that parking lot in an efficient and effective way, there is plenty, believe me, plenty of demand for time, for neighbors to park there from time to time and use that site for neighborhood needs. In short, the neighbors around the Tacoma Metro expect and deserve a chance to be part of the design process, both from the Maryland side and the DC side. And the current residents in the neighborhood, both homeowners like myself and renters like the ones who live next to the site, should wind up, they deserve and expect, a site that is at least as neighborhood-friendly for them as it will be for whatever new residents wind up in those building, in the building which I anticipate will be built. So please, don't sacrifice current quality of life in order, of the current residents for new residents. Find a way to accommodate the needs of the existing community as you figure out how to make new housing available for new neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of the list of folks who have signed up to speak. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening?
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Elliot Queen. First, I'd like to say that, obviously, this project is going forward. I mean, I think that's just the reality of it. There are some assumptions that are being made. First, that the number of cars that this is going to bring into the area because you're close to metro, that folks will not drive. Well, I'm a living example that that's not the case. I live in, I live three blocks from the metro. I drive every day, and I work downtown. So that's an assumption. That's not a fact. Now, I've lived in Tacoma Park, DC for 40-plus years. As a kid growing up here, and then when I chose to purchase a home, I purchased here. And I think it's important for WAMADA to remember that people buy in communities for the character of the community. That's the reason you put your money down, the largest purchase you'll ever make, your home. Now, WAMADA talked about smart growth, and EYA, they talk about smart growth. This isn't smart growth on this parcel. Now, smart growth at Fort Totten is smart growth on the Green Line at Georgia and New Hampshire. That's smart growth. This is not smart growth on a side, on a site this small. In fact, what it does is, it is, makes it high-density. Now, keep it in character with the community. If you're going to build an apartment building, make that apartment building conform with the existing apartments that it'll be right next to. And you have to remember, you have homeowners that are directly across the street. Those homeowners with a building the size that's proposed, I mean, it'll dwarf the homes. Now, you talk about there are other large buildings that are right behind the 7-Eleven. The difference is, they're not across, directly across the street from residences. They're across the street from businesses and other apartment builders. That makes a difference. So again, since we know that this is going to happen, build the apartment buildings, but make it conform to the rest of the community. Make it fit. Don't make it an eyesore. I think someone described it as Godzilla. Don't make it look like Godzilla. Make it fit with the community. I mean, there's so many other things that could be pointed out that I think has already been covered tonight, so I won't go over those. So I'm just saying, make it fit with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Anyone else? Yes, would you come up and introduce yourself? It's right behind the projector there.
Good evening. I'm Scott Nickerbacher. I live down at 814 Underwood, just down the street.
Could you, could you, your last name is?
Scott Nickerbacher.
Nickerbacher, thank you.
I'm sure you've heard many of the arguments against the development as it stands. We know that something's going to go in that spot, and like everybody else, I would just like to see it done right. It's been called smart development, but I believe as the plan stands right now, it's just housing units. So it would be good to see retail and office space there, too, to truly promote a walkable community. Another concern that I have, that I haven't heard too much about, is whether or not metro itself, can the infrastructure as it exists right now, really support more people? I don't know how many of you came back tonight, this evening. It was, because of problems on the red line, it was, it was a mess at Tacoma, bottlenecks going through the fair gates. So when you add more people, especially right on top of the metro, I'm afraid that how that would affect commuting. So I don't, I don't know what was said before, so I'm going to keep my speech short. But thank you for hearing us and listening to our concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could you come up and introduce yourself?
My name is Lucy McCulak. I'm a resident of Tacoma Park, Maryland. I've lived here for 35 years, and I take the metro to work every day. My family has used it, my husband's used it to go to work. And I have to say that I came to this meeting about 7:30 or 8 o'clock, so I missed a lot of the beginning things. But I don't think this development is at all in keeping with what Tacoma Park represents, DC side or Maryland side. I think there's, it doesn't look green at all to me, you know, with, with the environment the way it is nowadays. I can't believe that there's no green on the, on the roof, and there isn't a setback. I mean, I just feel like this is, this is not representative of what we stand for here, both Tacoma Park on either side. So I'm very disappointed in the size of this. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Alex Chaffee?
I'm Alex Chaffee. I'm a Tacoma, DC resident. Just want to say how excited I am about the development moving, the development moving forward and taking its next steps towards building and connecting my side of Tacoma, DC to the Tacoma Park, Maryland side of the border, making it safer for us to walk back and forth around the metro and bringing some more liveliness, walkability to the area as well. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? All right. Seeing no one, we'll conclude the public hearing.